Good evening, it's seven o'clock on, what is today? Monday, February 17th, and I will call to order the regular town council meeting. And Wendy, will you please take a roll?
Uh, Councilor Gardner?
Present.
Councilor Koltaritis?
Present.
Councilor Schoon?
Present.
Councilor Tulowitzki?
Present.
And President Mellon.
Present. Okay, thank you. That brings us to a moment of silence, will you please rise and then we'll follow the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that brings us to the 45th Street construction update.
Good evening, Lee Randall with the OZ, now that we're being filmed.
Good evening.
Okay, updates, excavation for the underpass continues. They are currently at an elevation which is consistent with what will be the top slab, or the bottom slab, excuse me, of the underpass, so basically the riding surface. That's what's excavated. Subcontractor Michaels arrived on site today. This week they plan on installing the relief wells, all the way to the point, up to basically like the shoe fly. So there will be a few relief wells that will have to be installed at a later date, once that shoe fly is removed in order to complete that configuration of 45th Street and that realignment, basically around that curve towards Southwood.
That leads to Maynard Lake?
I'm not familiar with where that is. So that's going east on the west side of Southwood. So, um, kind of, I guess if you looked at projecting Oriole, street or avenue is about where the underpass lies with the intersection of 45th Street. So at that point, obviously, we put the shoe fly, which is the bypass of the railroad track, on the existing 45th Street there, what used to be 45th Street. So in order to complete that alignment, we'll have to put the railroad back in basically its original configuration and then construct the rest of the roadway.
Railroad will be at the same elevation as it always was before?
Correct, correct, yes. Yep, once that's said and done. Tomorrow, I believe Hawk Enterprises will be on site to make some corrections, and adjustments, I should say, to the lighting and signal services per request of NIPSCO. As far as I know, there should be no known conflicts with any lane restrictions, things of that nature. Especially there at 45th and Calumet, they should be able to work within that, the radius where we have our widening. And then, of course, following our relief well installation, which they say should be completed this week, we should then progress with drainage structures and underdrains, things of that nature, that will be placed underneath the underpass itself as part of that lift station process and operations. So with that, that's basically the extent of my update here, if you happen to have any questions.
Yeah, Lee, I have one, when do you expect the lights to go on in Southwood and 45th?
As soon as they make the adjustments for NIPSCO's request tomorrow, it should be able, NIPSCO will then basically schedule the installation of that service point. So as soon as they can do that, hopefully within a few days, perhaps even by the end of the week, you'll have service available for both on 45th Street at Southwood, as well as, you know, 45th Street West there at Calumet as well. So both of those should be able to, oh, become operational. And those will be metered, not metered, excuse me, non-metered, at all. So, just a flat rate.
Lee, will those be metered in the end state design?
For the, no, not for the, the light, the roadway lighting. The signals will be, comes to find, I mean, I'm not an electrical, I don't have a whole lot of expertise there as far as that goes, but the, the voltage is, I guess it's a 240-480 service for the lighting that's required, based on the energy draw for the new roadway lights and the existing. So that requires an excessive amount of work in order to basically convert that power from 240-480 down to 120, just to install a meter. And of course, I'm sure that NIPSCO would, would pass along that cost to the owner. So we're able to at least, based on the existing number of lights, their usage as well as the new lights, and those usages, be able to apply a fixed rate for those.
Other questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
That brings us to the public comments section of the meeting. If we have anyone who would like to speak, we ask you to keep it to two minutes maximum per person, or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. In the chair, it's sole discretion, may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time and man that opened the public session. All speakers will be timed for the clerk treasurer, and this portion of the meeting shall not exceed 20 minutes. I see we have students with us tonight, I don't know if you have, if you have anything you'd like to say or ask, feel free to come up. Or Mike.
Yeah. I'm taking Dave's spot, tapping on the mic. Mike Demovic, 1833 Tulow Lane, I have two questions. Number one, Centennial Park, the study that they're doing, is it done? Or is it still ongoing for the repairs to the clubhouse and stuff? Because I thought they were trying to figure out who's going to pay for what, and they were doing a study?
There was an ADA study that identified what repairs need to be made to Centennial Park, the amphitheater and clubhouse to make it in compliance with those federal regulations. And that is complete, and the Parks Department is working through that.
I'm talking about the other.
As I'm going.
Okay, that's, that was the one I was interested in, the ADA one, you're always going to get that. The second question I have, a few months back, you had the incident where the boy was hit on the bike on Columbia and Franlin, I believe? And you talked, they talked about creating some type of a, a committee or something? What's the status of that?
The, uh, there was a group of residents and staff and elected officials that got together. We talked about public safety, pedestrian safety, bike safety, basically multimodal transportation, where we want to go, that's going to be an ongoing conversation as well. I mean, you're not going to move to a situation where you're going to have complex policy solutions after one conversation, but it was a productive conversation, if you'd like to minister that conversation, I'd be happy to share them with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, thanks, thank you. Anyone else? Are you sure, back there, you look like you're trying to decide if you want to? Okay, alright, seeing that no one else would like to speak, I'll close the, the public comment section and move to the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda as given.
I second it.
We have a motion and we have a second, is there any discussion? Same nod, Wendy, if you please call.
Certainly, Councilor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilor Koltaritis?
Yes.
Councilor Schoon?
Yes.
Councilor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no old business tonight, that takes us to the new business, Resolution 2063, opposition to House Bill 1165.
Alright, I'll, yep, I'll take this one, House Bill 1165 has been around for a little while, last year and this year. This year it's made it to the Senate, so we're very concerned. In a sense, what they're saying is that as a utility, which is our water, we are, would have no recourse against the landlord of a property. So this could have a significant financial impact, should it pass. And, I mean, I wrote everything in the memo, and so. And really, what we've done is, there's a clerk treasurer email that goes around, and Highland had drafted this and shared it, and we felt that it was worded eloquently enough and specifically enough, and strong enough that we can feel comfortable sharing it with our legislators.
Madam Chairman, because this is written as Resolution Number 2063, which says that the Munster Town Council is going on record as opposing this bill, I move that we adopt Resolution, just a second, Resolution 2063, which is anti-Vill 111, I mean 1165.
We have a motion?
I second that motion.
We have a second, is there any further discussion, questions or?
Wendy, is it currently, these rental units, are we billing the landlord at this time?
It's, we primarily bill the tenant, but the landlord signs as a backup. And some landlords do choose to be the primary on the account, it's less frequent.
The way the policy is, and this goes back a number of years, the landlord is ultimately responsible. The landlord signs the service agreement, we, they have to send their tenant in, the landlord gets the bill, tenant gets the bill as well, so both sides see it. Some landlords have their tenant make the payment, but ultimately, the landlord is the one that's responsible. And the landlord is no, they, they get that bill every month, so they can see what state the bill is in, if it's being paid by their tenant or not.
So the state is saying that they're not going to be responsible?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Is this primarily for residential, or is this commercial too?
Commercial as well, right?
I am not sure of that piece.
I thought, I thought it was.
I'm, I'm not sure of that piece.
And I don't know if it's something I read additionally, but I thought it did impact.
I would be against the bill in either case.
The manager of property, can I just?
Do you have a second, Steve?
Well, I would just say for people who are following along, or students back there, or someone watching online, that we regularly keep an eye on the bills that are coming through the General Assembly. I'm curious what aim, the Accelerating Indiana Municipalities, if they have an opinion, or what they're, what they're doing about 1165, this particular bill, do we know?
They're opposed to it.
Yeah.
And are they sort of coordinating other communities?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
They are, they've put the call out to let communities know and ask them to contact their legislature.
Yeah, the impact of this whole thing passing is that it can increase the water rates on all, all residents in town, because tenants who don't pay, it's hard to chase down someone for whatever their water bill is, that gets then redistributed, and our overall rates will, will have to go up. So that's what we're trying to protect against.
Are we just, yeah, we would lose, either have to, we would lose, in the, in the short term, we would just, we'd be losing revenue. And what did, what did you say at one point, you thought it could be approximately?
It would be at least $20,000 a year, we would be talking about. We have on our shut off list this month, $4,700 that are just renters.
Okay, so we are, since we're, we can pass this on the first read?
It's a resolution.
Because it's a resolution, but we do need to avoid the roll call.
Exactly. Councilor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilor Koltaritis?
Yes.
Councilor Schoon?
Yes.
Councilor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Mellon?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is the purchase approval of two mezzanines, and this was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to?
I'll, I'll just give a little color to the folks who are on agenda review. So, for those of you who don't know, particularly the three gentlemen who are unit council, when the old Munster shops where Hostess and O'Hara's were over there, we had a significant amount of town material in storage there, as the owner of the property. So we had some equipment, we had chemicals for the pool, chemicals for the golf course, ash, hot mix, a lot of our holiday decorations, just a bunch of stuff, right? So over a period of years, that stuff accumulated. And by the time we sold it, I kind of, I kind of called it the town's junk drawer, right? Everybody has a drawer in their house where there's all kinds of really good stuff in it, and that's where you put the good stuff that you don't use all the time.
Lieutenant, is this?
Yeah, right? So, fire drill? So, I, our departments did a fantastic job when we had to vacate those premises of like weaving out the junk drawer, just like we all do every like five or six years. But we still have some really good stuff that we don't use all the time, that we've got to keep. Now, there, a real good case could be made that eventually, we're going to need a little bit more under roof space, but now is not the time to tackle that challenge. So the marching orders that I've given is to make better use of the space we have. So if you look at the specs for these mezzanines, it's almost like industrial closet organizers, is how I would equate it, right? It's going to take stuff off the floor and make us more effective at storing things that we have out of the way.
I've never heard the word mezzanine used this way before.
I hadn't either, actually.
Oh, and this is fancy shelving?
Very fancy shelf.
I mean, with elevated, I mean electric lifts to take things up, or something like that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Fancy nevertheless.
Very.
Okay.
So I, I think it's a good bridge solution for, for a, for a short term, while we get our heads around both financially and conceptually, what the ultimate, better solution will be for our long-term needs. But in the interim, I, I do think this is a wise use of our funds, so I would recommend us moving forward.
I move that we approve the quotation from Tiger of Material Handlings for the two mezzanines for a total cost of $33,460. Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Which we should know is the lowest bid.
It is the lowest bid.
Though we had several, three bids.
We can do this voice vote, so any other questions? I know, it's pretty straightforward. It's really exciting for the students here, I apologize that we're talking about large closet organizers, but it's part of the jo, it's part of the job.
And now you know that a very fancy one is called a mezzanine.
Yes.
Very fancy one.
Okay, so we'll do this by voice, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, go ahead and order the mezzanines.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the Greenwood sanitary sewer change order.
So this project started last year, and it was to eliminate the potential for a combined sewer overflow event that would place us in violation of both state and federal clean water guidelines. So it was a necessary project. When we solicited this work in October, we had three bids. They ranged from $110,000, $88,000, and I believe this was originally for $44,000 with Grimmer. So Grimmer was awarded this work, and as they went through the work, they found a number of things that they did not count on experiencing. Most significantly, 36-inch steel NIPSCO pipe that NIPSCO could not identify as being in service or not in service. So they told Grimmer to treat it as if it were in service, right? So there's that, there's some soil issues that made excavation a challenge and restoration, put, pushed off to the spring. It's, I'm not happy bringing this here, honestly. It is a significant change order, it's 36, basically $37,000. At the end of the day, it is just still under the second lowest bid, so we have that going for us. I think it's interesting to note, like this bid came in super low, and a week later, at Little Cal, Grimmer also submitted bids that were outrageously low, and that they withdrew those bids ultimately, because they decided they could not deliver on the low quote. So maybe it was just a hiccup in their estimating department, that, you know, this is collateral damage. It's a necessary project, the change orders that they are bringing forward are totally legit. I wish it wasn't, but it is. And I think we just, we got a, a poorly estimated bid. But at the end of the day, the project will be delivered, completed, for less than the next lowest bidder. So that's certainly a rationalization, but I think it's the one I'm going to choose.
I move we approve the change order on the Greenwood sanitary sewer project in the amount of $36,876.17 to Grimmer Construction, revising the final contract to $81,026.17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion, questions?
Yes, um, were we, was it our staff that put the quote-unquote bid spec together? Or was S E H involved with the bid spec?
S E H put the bid spec together in conjunction with our staff. And if you look at the other two bids, that would be the change order, the attachment other than the memo. You see Hassy came in at about $100,000, and Gatlin at $86, both really close to the number that will ultimately be done, $81,000, right? So I don't think it's an issue with the spec, because two out of three bid what, in hindsight, is a more accurate bid.
They'll do the work though?
Was that?
They will do the work?
Oh, great, yeah, Grimmer's going to do the work. And they do good work, right? Unfortunately, I think this was just a misfire of a bid.
Dustin, you said in the memo that this work was an emergency because it was the EPA finding, and so we had?
Well, what we, it wasn't an EPA finding, to, to frame it like that implies that we had some kind of violation. We did not, what we found was a potential source of a future violation, right? So we, we saw something that ought not be, and we fixed it before it was, you get what I mean?
Yeah, and I understood, though, there was an acceleration of getting the work started?
I wouldn't say that there was an acceleration, there was an urgency to it, but there, I don't think there was a, a cost associated that with that, like we weren't having to work Saturdays or something like that, or taking them off a competing job. All three firms were able to do this work in their regular course of business. But there was a sense of urgency to get it done substantially before the winter.
Okay, I, I was just reading about this quasi-emergency level, without benefit of standard contractors, soil borings and potholing and other things. Basically, my question is, like how, this is great, though we're doing this, we need to do that, I have no issue with that. I'm just wondering if we're learning a lesson of like, in a quasi-emergency, could we, would we think twice or maybe take a week to do the soil samples and all, all that?
Certainly, we could, we could, I would say it's probably that, yeah, we could. Again, I would probably say, look at Hassy's bid and Gatlin's bid, they probably looked at where the work was being done in the NIPSCO easement and said, we've all dealt with NIPSCO before, there's probably stuff that we're not going to see on a GIS layer, and they'll probably treat it like this, so we're going to bid a little bit higher, and if it comes in better, all the better for everyone. But it's a point well taken, it, perhaps it could have been a little bit too more due diligence.
And I appreciate Grimmer giving us, it looks like a 10% or 7,000 discounts for not catching it ahead of time.
No, I wonder too, same time, you know, if Grimmer didn't bid it correctly, or full, you know, with full anticipation of the problems they might find. When you said that NIPSCO said they couldn't, they couldn't verify whether it was live or not, I mean, don't they have some kind of responsibility? Because it obviously costs a lot more money to treat it as if it were active, you know what I mean? So, is it just a common?
I think when dealing with NIPSCO, I would say it is a very, I want to, I want to treat NIPSCO fair, because they're not here for me to like beat up on them.
Right.
But I, I wouldn't be surprised with an outcome where there was abundance of caution exercised by NIPSCO with relation to how their assets are treated, I think is a fair thing to say.
Just seems like they might be able to send somebody, I don't know. It just seems like, I'll just, you know, treat it like it, in the most expensive way that you could possibly treat it.
Right.
That's, I mean, easy for them to say, because they're not paying the bill, but nonetheless, there's really, there's nothing that we can, you know, we can't really do anything about it, so, and it is work that needs to be done, so.
Has this work been completed already, or is this the approval for the change order to go forward?
The work had to be completed.
So it was completed?
Yes.
Okay. I, I remember the other thing, by the football field, along the ditch, but then closer to Columbia Avenue, there's, some have noticed a foul odor, is that at all related to this issue?
Not at all.
Okay.
That is often related to the pump station, right there, that large building is actually a Hammond Sanitary District pump station. And I can give you a little bit more background on a couple other things after the meeting.
Okay, but when this larger pipe is installed, unfortunately?
That, that's not going to fix it. It's going to keep us regulatorily compliant, for sure, which is as exciting.
Well, and not pollute, which is more important, which is what we want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Even if it works.
Mr. Gardner, it looks like he has.
Did Grimmer give us any indication how much the T and M was going to be on the additional work? When we gave them approval to move forward with the work?
They gave me a rough estimate, that it was going to be, you know, between 20 and 30.
Between 20 and 30?
Yes, so they gave it a little high there as well.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second, if I recall, it's been a long discussion. And we do this with a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, thank you. That takes us to the CDVG alley repaving project, the S E H proposal letter to, to oversee, basically.
Yeah, this is basically a little tiny version of what Lee does, it's a construction, engineering, and inspection. So, just to put staff on it and make sure that the grades being delivered match what was to spec, and make sure everything is in compliance. They also assist with our regulatory compliance with the community development black grant for a total cost of not to exceed $10,000.
I move that we accept the contract with S E H for the additional, for the project management work on this project.
Second.
Any discussion, I would like to see if we could put the, the maximum not to exceed $10,000?
Yes.
On that, just so it's in the motion?
Then I withdraw my motion, and make a new motion that we, right, is that how we're supposed to do it?
That's one way to do it.
It is, but I would tell you, you don't need to, because you're accepting the agreement, and the agreement itself says, at an hourly basis, not exceeding $10,000 without prior authorization by the town of Munster.
So that's already?
Town of Munster, although, I think they're talking about us.
Okay, alright, sorry, I was just being.
So you're retracting your?
I'm retract, retracting my withdrawal of the motion, except for my first motion.
Alright, sorry about that, I just want to make sure we, we know they can't, can't fill us more without another, another approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we, please move forward with the contract then with S E H. And that brings us to. Hello.
We just had several items, going through our inventory, no longer serviceable, and also, Tim's talking about space. We had, we need to get more space out of the town garage, so we're trying to get rid of some things. Is, you have the list there, if you guys have any specific questions about them, I can answer them. It's pretty straightforward, just a few things this time.
I don't have any questions.
I move we authorize the police department to destroy listed property and remove same from our current inventory.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, thank you very much. Do you get to swing the hammer and smash this stuff? Because I think that might be fun, it might be a good way for us to get out of frustration, sometimes?
Sometimes.
I did notice there are two tasers no longer functioning, and two chairs that are broken, that's not related, is it?
The tasers just wear out after that.
And the tasers?
What's that?
And the tasers, they wear out, or?
Yes, they just wear out. They have a shelf life on them.
Alright, that brings, we have no reports tonight. The announce, announcements, all town council meetings will begin at 7:00 PM unless otherwise noted. And our upcoming meetings, regular town council. And our upcoming meetings, regular town council and redevelopment commission meetings are March 2nd, March 16th and April 6th. And that moves us to a German.
So move.
Next up?
Move. Motion, well, was that Ken? Ken got the motion?
Ken can have it.
Okay, so Ken's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Students, do you, would you like a photo when you're here? Do you need proof? Yeah, come on up.
Maybe they want to stay for the redevelopment?
I'm betting no.
They like it after credit.
Yeah, if you get, if you get extra credit, well, I know they don't do extra credit anymore, but if you.
Do you get more points? I'd love to hurry up and picture.
All right. And all these tall kids.
A little more to the right. They're just looking for an experience here. They're like proof of attendance really, but, all right.
No, they don't.
Just hashtag.
Thank you. Yeah. My son will be a senior next year and he's like, I said, well, you'll have to come. It's like, you'll have to tell me what's going to be.
I'm present.
John is present and I'll let him clear out.
So you'll be, you'll be present, you'll have to do it before December?
Yes. It depends if he has government or, yeah, doesn't know yet. All right. My time is seven, what is it, 7:33? And I'm called to order the, or 7:32, I'll call to order the redevelopment commission regular meeting for February 17th, 2020.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
Commissioner Schoon?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Presence.
And Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
And Mr. Cash Throwitzker as well. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Hello, Mr. Castro. All right. Does anyone wish to address the commission this evening? Mike, Jim?
Mike?
Nope, nothing? All right, well then I'm not going to, I'll spare everyone. I won't read the public comment portion. That we will go on to the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes. We have no old business, no new business, no reports or announcements. So that brings us to a German.
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Sorry, John.
Doing my duty.
Thank you, John.